Okay, I'd like to call this October 5th Council Work Session the order. Sorry for the delay. We've been in executive session since 5:30 discussing police litigation. And again, I apologize for being 10, 15 minutes late.
You mean police negotiations, right?
Litigation, right, pal. Negotiations and we were discussing.
Okay.
About litigation.
Yeah, I just want people to think we were talking about something we weren't talking about.
No, that's all. It's about the police, it's about the police contract.
That's all.
There you go.
Take it.
That's all I was just talking about.
All right, I know Ted Durant's here from Pico. Ted, I don't want to hold you up any longer, so if you want to go to the podium and update us on the Pico project, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of council, and Mayor Sabatini. Wanted to stop by this evening and give you a quick update as to where we are regarding the manufactured gas plant remediation project that's ongoing in the borough, just to refresh everybody's memory. I'm sure you really don't need to be refreshed, but just to step back a moment, you'll recall that we began this project in 2010, 2011 in the borough. As part of the project, what we're doing is we're removing the residual materials left over from a manufactured gas plant that operated in the borough in the late 19th century, early 20th century. That plant actually manufactured gas, and that gas was distributed among residences and businesses. Later on in Pico's history, Pico inherited that obligation there. And in the 2010 timeframe, we began the project to remediate that site. We began on property that we owned, which is our Bristol Electric Substation that's right next to the Goodwill Hose Company. We did work there, completed all of the soil removal with that part of the site. And then in 2015, we moved over to that portion of the site where we had remediation work to do on the Goodwill Hose Company facility there. We began that work with the demolition of a portion of the Goodwill Hose Company property, most specifically the bingo hall. We took the bingo hall down and we started remediation activities there. That involves removing soil and then backfilling of the soil there. And just wanted to bring you up to date, and we expect, we had some weather in the last couple of weeks, but we expect to have all of the soil excavated out of the site by the 16th of October, give or take a few days. And we expect then to have all of the backfilling done by the end of October. And at that point, it will be completed, and basically, as far as our work is done, we'll be finishing up at that particular point in time. So that's what we have ahead of us.
I know saying it's been an inconvenience to the neighbors is an understatement to live through this for the last so many months, but, I mean, you're trying to do your part in getting it done as fast as possible. You know, we're dealing with the complaints to council people from that word or, you know, pull their hair out, but, I mean, it's just human nature that this has taken place. And again, you know, we feel bad for the residents in that area, but by delaying the project or shortening the work, it's only going to add months to the project. So, I mean, it's a catch-22 for everybody up there. I think nobody sitting here is happy about what's going on, including yourself.
No question.
But the job has to get done, has to get done.
Yeah, we're taking the project on voluntarily to get it cleaned up, to get the soil out of there and the product out of there. And we believe we're going to leave behind a much better situation there. We know it's been an inconvenience to the neighbors there. We're doing everything in our power to try to get the work done and be as respectful as we can along the way.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are the people that live in that area susceptible to any, like, chemical reaction, like, problems down the road? Because they said that they see people in the hazmat suits working.
Yeah, right.
And they're right, they live right there, so they said, how come they have a hazmat suit and I don't?
Right.
So I would like you to clear that up and really explain that, please.
Yeah, so there are some regulations that govern workers when they work in close proximity to product like we have there, which is basically a tar-like substance. So there's an opportunity for them to get skin exposure.
Okay.
And an opportunity for them to breathe some fumes as a result of being in very close contact with the product. So that's the reason that they're wearing protective equipment. But we are doing proactive air quality monitoring on that site at various places, and except for the area down in the hole, so to speak, where the workers are working, you know, there's no, there's no health concern.
So when you did check the air quality right near the houses there, there was no problem with the air quality?
That's correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Very low, very, very, very low, almost indetectable elements there.
Okay.
So no, no health concerns.
And the smell is really directed. It really is. I mean, I feel very bad for these people. And also, the smell of that, whatever that cherry bomb that comes out is horrible, too. So the sooner the better. I mean, I know that this has to be done, I understand all of this, but it is really a problem to these people that live there, and we really should, you know, make a note of that. I mean, it's sad that they've had to live through this, really is.
Yeah, we're.
I've been over there many times, and I can tell you, it is horrible.
I understand.
Okay, what's the estimated cost of this project?
Roughly $10.5 million for the remediation of the project there.
And I think that you're leaving a safer environment. I mean, look, nobody wants to spend $10 million voluntarily if, you know, for no reasons. I think you came in town, you did your due diligence, and you went in and cleaned up a site that could have stayed. And...
It could have, it could have stayed in the state that it was in, and that's not the condition that we want to leave our properties in.
And I think that, talking to people that I know do abatement, when you're doing an air quality control like you're talking about, that's usually done by an independent company, not Pico.
That's correct.
So that independent company is putting their reputation on the line, or their business on the line, by saying, these are the air quality control tests. Like, you're removing asbestos, and they're saying the air is clear, and God forbid, they're in a school and a kid gets, you know, asbestos, asbestos or whatever. Then there's, that air quality company is basically falsifying documents.
Right.
So when that company's out there telling the residents in that area that air quality test is clean, it's clean.
That's correct.
I mean, unless, you know, they're falsifying documents, so...
And Ralph, I just wanted him to clarify that.
No, and I'm glad you brought that up, because it's important.
So the people who know in the area that they were not in danger, I wanted them to be aware. If they were, I wanted to know.
It's important that people know that the air quality test is safe, and the smell is horrendous, the cherry smells even worse.
Right.
You know, but, I mean, you know, it's a job that has to get done, and, you know, sooner the better.
Can you reiterate your timeline as to...
Yeah, so, as I said, we had a few weather days here with the rain and so forth. What we're anticipating is that if we don't get any more heavy weather, and it doesn't look like we will going out a couple of weeks, we should be done excavating the product out of the ground by the 16th, if it would take a day or two. And then if we continue to do the project the way we believe it will go, we expect to be completed, everything, as far as the backfilling and everything, by the end of October, October 30th.
And explain it on how deep you are.
Well, we're, you know, we're deep.
I know.
We're deep.
I know, I've seen it, I've seen it.
And, and we're deep enough, we're deep, we have to follow safe work practices to make sure that our workforce is safe and those contractors are safe. So we're doing, you know, adequate shoring and all of that, and excavating deeply. And then as we go, as we take product out of the ground, we're backfilling as we go.
That's what I thought, yeah.
It's because we don't want to leave, you know, huge, huge areas unexcited, or excavated, so to speak. So we're doing, you know, that work as we go, not opening up huge areas and leaving them open to a large period of time, trying to get out to the other end of the ground.
And when will those pylons be taken out?
Okay, so, when we finish the backfill, as we proceed towards the end of the backfilling operation, we'll start to remove those pilings out.
And about how long do you think it'll take to get the pilings out?
Well, we expect to have those out coincidentally with the completion of the soil backfill.
And again, just so the general public understands, you know, the term backfill sounds so, you would not believe the size of the trucks going down, I mean, going down Mifflin Street. You would not believe the amount that's been, the amount of inconvenience, again, the smell, the smell. It's not Pico's fault, but I think from the very beginning, I think that if I had a criticism, it would be that Pico should have been worth forthcoming in communicating with the neighbors, not so much the people who live on Bass Street and Swain Street, or Bass Street and Locust Street, but at least in that general area, that end of Swain, Mifflin, that corner of Linden Street. Because I think that, go into all the meetings that I went to and all the boards that showed, I had no idea at the amount of work that would be done, and it was me constantly getting the questions about, what does this mean, what does that mean? People were scared, you know?
You are.
And I think had they known in advance, we're going to do this, and we're going to do that, and we're going to do this, I think they probably would have been more accepting.
Right, point taken. I will say that we did have, and we've had from the very beginning of the project, a repository on the borough's website that provides information about what we're doing all the way through the project. And included in that repository are the names and telephone numbers of individuals at Pico that, you know, can answer questions.
Oh, you've gotten some calls, I'm sure.
Oh, no doubt about it, no doubt about it. And we're taking, you know, each one of those calls, if we, whatever the case may be, you know, we're getting back to those folks and explaining what we're doing and what the project is all about, and what we see going forward to the end of October.
And just to follow up on the range cherry mist, that cherry mist is put in the, in the air to cover up the smell of the creosote, that gray slimy stuff that's coming out of the ground.
So, so what it's intended to do is to try to neutralize, we do, we do a lot, although it's not seen, we do a lot of work to reduce the odors down in the hole, so to speak.
How much really smell?
So we spray, we spray foam and apply some other materials there, you know, to minimize as much as we possibly can.
Much really smell, then?
No doubt about it. And then what we, what we typically do then is we apply, we use the cherry mist, or the cherry, the cherry smell, to help try to mask the other smell of the material. So it's a catch-22 as to whether you want to, you know, smell the material, which could be, you know, pretty, pretty odorous.
Well, I did hear, I did hear residents who understood that as the holidays come, that that cherry can be changed to a winter green, so that might...
Well, we hope to be, we hope to be...
We hope you're up.
Completely, completely done and out of there way before Thanksgiving or Christmas.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Anybody else have any questions for Ted? Ted, thanks again.
You're welcome.
You've been here more than once to update us on this project.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay. Gene, Mary, sorry to hold you guys up, but...
Council President De Giuseppe, members of Borough Council, Mayor Sabatini, Borough Manager, Solicitor, Policeman and Fire Chief, thank you for the opportunity to come before you today to update you on the, our summer camp program.
I want to watch it.
Okay. I just wanted to, again, thank you for the opportunity, and to indicate that we had a very successful program, the AOC-sponsored summer camp for the third year. We partnered with the Borough Council and some other partners to put the program together. The AOC, again, is an organization begun by the Grundy Foundation in 2010, consisting of community volunteers, working with the school district, education professionals, and elected officials to offer after-school and summer camp opportunities for our youth. What are we talking about? We're talking about two learning centers. One is an after-school, after-school program at Snyder Girardi, which is for grades one through eight. That is through AOC secured funding, including council's funding this past year. The other learning center is a center we have established at the high school, which is grant-funded. That's a 21st Century Community Grant Fund. They have two learning centers in town. One is privately funded, if you will, through AOC efforts. The other is funded through the 21st Century Learning Center grant. Why do we do this? Bottom line, provide opportunities designed to develop students' academic, personal, and social skills. The first slide, I think, did have a nice picture of the King George, which is one of our newer partners, stepped in big time, Rob Strasser and Bruce Lowe, fantastic partners. And there you see on the left-hand side there, we paid a visit to the King George back in August. Remember those days when people were wearing shorts and t-shirts, now people are bundled up with, you know, winter jackets and pea coats on. But great day, and just great partners. So, the next slide then just shows us sponsors, and obviously, without Borough Council, this thing doesn't happen. Again, for the third particular, consecutive year, the council in particular was a big booster of what we're trying to do. It's like, I can't thank you enough for the opportunity to put the program together. Our second major partner was the school district. And with that, by that I mean, the facility, we used Snyder Girardi, brought us, excuse me, equipment, brought us administration. I can't say enough about Mrs. Kelly Rosado and her staff about assisting us with, especially helped with the curriculum. That was very, very important. The maintenance staff was unbelievable. I can't say enough about what they did to help us. And also faculty, that little indication there, that faculty experiment donations, materials actually that staff had were donated, so we could put on, and we will, we will explain a little bit more about what happened with the experiments, the science experiments that were happening there during the course of the camp. But teacher donations really helped in that regard. We added a new sponsor this year, Parks Casino stepped up to help us with a $10,000 grant. We appreciated that. The AOC, the fundraising that we've done over the past couple of years, we had to pay for $3,000 worth of supplies to help the camp proceed and do well. I mentioned King George, they donated camper's t-shirts. We also had free meals supplied by the Archdiocese of Philadelphia, both breakfast and lunch for the first time. So our kids were well-fed, well-nourished, well-schooled, well-behaved for the course of the summer. And again, I believe we're the only municipality in Bucks County offering free summer camp for residents grade one through 12. We thank you for making that happen. The next... Thank you. Real quickly, just a snapshot of where we're talking about, or I should say, who we're talking about, we're talking about kindergarten through eighth, this would be as of May of 2015. So kids, you know, when the school year ended, those in kindergarten through eighth grade were eligible over at Snyder Girardi. We had a, again, six-week camp, beginning in mid-July, early July through August 13th, Mondays through Thursdays, 8:30 to 1 o'clock, and we had 134 students enrolled, which is pretty good. Big thing, too, is, you know, we had homeschooled students, St. Mark's students, and borough students, all residents. They were checked, and checked, and checked again. All borough residents, so that's, that's important to know. Okay? With that, I'd like to turn the podium over to Mary Just Walty, our Title I Coordinator, and after Mary will be Latoya Som. She was our camp coordinator this particular year.
Okay, I, too, want to thank you on behalf of our students and our parents for supporting these programs year after year. And as you can see, a lot of happy faces in our summer program. The reason we needed the program was because research shows us that if children are not academically stimulated, as far as reading, writing, science, and math over the summer months, they can go back as many as two or three months, and we didn't want that to happen. We also know that if children are not physically active and doing recreation, that we have to worry about body fat and obesity. So that was another component of our summer camp. And you can see there the last bullet, our goal for the camp was to keep the children mentally and physically stimulated through the summer while also having fun, and they certainly did. Our staff, Ms. Latoya Wood, who is now married and is now Mrs. Som, was our camp coordinator. She did an excellent job, spent the whole two weeks before the camp started getting everything ready for the camp. Melissa Adamson was the assistant for our camp. And as you can see, we had seven academic counselors. They all had at least two years of college experience. Our six recreational counselors had at least one year of college experience. And you're going to notice by looking at those names, there are a lot of Bristol connections, which was nice. A lot of our former students were the counselors this summer. And another bonus, we actually had five students who came and volunteered during the camp. Some of them giving as many as 32 hours. Four of them are Bristol High students, and one is a technical high school student. And Virginia Huffmangl, you'll probably recognize her name, is a parent whose child was in our program, and she came and volunteered, which was wonderful. All right, Latoya.
So prior to working at this camp, I actually had the privilege of working for Paulsington Camp, and I know when their kids actually registered, they paid about $900 a kid. So again, to go back and really thank you guys for making it free for our students. Camp started at 8:30 and it lasted till 1 o'clock. We had an hour and 40 minutes of academics and then an hour and 40 minutes of recreation. It actually flip-flopped for the younger students. We had an hour and 40 of academics in the morning, and then we flip-flopped for the recreation in the afternoon. What we provided for academics was reading and writing on their grade level or on their reading level, math and art, which were on the same day, computer lab, which the kids worked on a Smithsonian Tween Tribune, which also was on their reading level, and then a science experiment every week. As well as recreation, we provided soccer, basketball, volleyball, wiffle ball, flag football, and hockey. And it was really tremendous walking around and seeing these students, as far as the college students that came out, actually being professional and doing just a great job with the kids, like, they were excited to come each day. So here again is some pictures of some of the things we've done with the kids.
Gene mentioned that every day, the children had a free breakfast and lunch that was provided by the Nutritional Development Services from the Archdiocese of Philadelphia. Myself and one of our counselors, Marielle DeLuca, went down to the Archdiocese and we were trained, so we were able to offer this free meal. Children could come off of the street if they wanted, and we had signs around the school telling them that there was a free breakfast and free lunch if they wanted to take advantage of it.
Did any children take advantage of that?
We didn't.
That's a shame.
And the sign was in Spanish and in English. So the meals were delivered fresh every day, they were healthy, and we did expose the children to some things that they normally wouldn't eat. Some examples were kiwi and hummus, so we now have some healthier children making healthier choices. And let's go on to the next slide, Latoya.
Okay, so, we wanted to make it so that the students would find the camp appealing. So along with the recreation, we didn't want the academics to seem like it was just reading and writing and nothing else with that. So we provided a science experiments for the kids each week. Again, it was, a lot of what we used were teacher-donated. The kids would read material on the particular type of science experiment they were doing that week. They would engage into the actual science inquiry, and then after they were done, they would have a long conversation with their counselors on what they participated in. And again, looking at some of their faces and some of the things that they were exposed to, they really were excited to do these experiments. I remember one in particular, grade one was really excited to play with the putty, and they were walking around with a putty all in their hands, they were really excited. And if you see up here, you have a couple of the kids with their hands in that slime and putty.
The other thing we wanted to offer, because as you know, with the budgetary cuts in the school district, not every grade level has art. And so we wanted to be able to offer art to the children. So our own Jeffrey Shapcott was the art counselor for the summer, and he did an excellent job. And every week, the children participated in 50 minutes of art. He was able to tap into their interests, they made minions, and we collected all the art, and the last week of the camp, we had an open art show for the parents and the community, and you could see the art show there. So the children were very proud to show off their work.
And he also incorporated at times literature to go with some of the art projects that he was doing, so that also kind of deepened their understanding of exactly what they were doing.
He had a nice collaboration with the Grundy Librarians, Mrs. Hickey and Mrs. Kern, always willing to help out. The children actually walked over to the library halfway through the summer camp, and the children loved the amount of reading that they did, and at the end of the program, the librarians awarded them for their summer reading.
And I think one of the biggest compliments we got from the Asher Librarians was, this was the first year that they had the entire camp actually participate in logging in their reading. So it was really fortunate that the kids were in the program and being able to track their reading. So as Mary talked about before, the justification for the camp was to make sure that we keep the kids mentally and physically stimulated throughout the camp. And from what we've seen from the, I guess, the beginning of the year, plus a smile on their faces every day, we succeeded in keeping them away from the summer slide. It actually was very enjoyable, and on top of planning a wedding, I was planning this camp, but it actually ran very, very smoothly, so I'm very proud of it.
And at the very end of the summer, we surveyed all the parents, all the children, and all of the staff. And the number one reason that parents enrolled their children in the camp this summer was the academics that were offered. They actually wanted their children to continue to make progress over the summer. And you could see some of the quotes. "Thank you for providing this camp, and thank you to all the individuals that helped," and that's you. "Camp was absolutely awesome, well-organized and structured, thanks to Latoya. Very friendly staff, and my son loved getting up." We heard that many times, that children did not mind getting up in the morning to come to the camp. "Keep up the great work." So we just want to thank you, and hopefully you feel as proud as we do about the program.
Well, I've heard some really good things about the art aspect. Some parents were just blown away, and they really enjoyed that part of it. So I'm so glad you added that and had that great...
We were blown away with a lot of the...
Yeah, we were.
Things that were done. I mean, I think he took everyday ordinary materials like aluminum foil and was able to make a stained glass window with that.
That's what the parents said.
And the kids were so, they were so excited for it. It was beautiful.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. So, any questions?
I'm just fixing these mics, that's why they were calling me out.
Oh, it's okay.
He's texting me telling, our mics are too high, so...
Uh-uh.
I don't want anything I walked out on you.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really have a question, I just want to thank you guys, Latoya, Mrs. Just Walty, Jean, everybody that participated and made it such a great event. I love having it, I know it's such a positive thing, because I sent my two girls to the art thing, and it was unbelievable. And the funny thing about it, the only complaint they had, they wish it wasn't so long. No, but they loved it, because they had to do so much in such a short, but they absolutely loved it, and, you know, you can't beat free, so...
That's true, we appreciate that.
Yeah.
I just think it shows partnering, partnering up with people, what you could accomplish working together as a group in town, so. Me and Jean first talked about this three years ago, or whatever, and you were at the first meeting, Mary. It was the right thing to do, because it was the right direction we were going in, and it just shows when people come together, what could you accomplish? So, thank you.
I wanted to reiterate what everyone said about it being wonderful, and then I just have a sort of a technical question. Are you guys able, maybe it's just anecdotal and it's not data-driven, but the kids that do go to camp, their performance in, like, September or... do go to camp, their performance in like September or October of school compared to maybe some kids that are trying to get their feet back on the ground, do you see it, noted a difference?
You sound a little, you sound a little like Jean Williams.
Yeah.
So Jean has been asking that question. And without actually doing pre and post-testing during the summer, which would take up quite a bit of time, what we were able to document is that the children did not go backwards. We do have some children who moved ahead and we'll start to see that as the year goes on, but we actually don't really have hard data.
Right, but I was saying anecdotally, I would guess your hunch would be that they, they're kind of out of the gates.
We know before this summer program started that children would return in September and actually go back a reading level. And that did not happen to the children that were in the camp.
Mary, how many, Latoya, how many kids were involved?
About 134, about 134.
Nice group.
Yeah. I mean, it really was tremendous. I mean, the kids' behavior, the counselors were very professional, I mean, everything. And I think Mary is gracious by saying that, you know, I did a good job, but it really is who works underneath you. It's the people that actually do their work that makes your job easy. And I think it was the counselors and the volunteers and all the hands on deck that actually made the camp as successful as it was.
I think on anything successful, you always try to build on it. So I think what our job and your job is, is to try to, you know, build on this program and keep it, you know, growing every year instead of declining.
We're looking forward to next summer.
Come up with a new plan, maybe throw some new things in there, because kids get bored. I mean, doing the same thing every day. And I think one of the goals was from the beginning is you can't take a kid every day and just education. They got to be able to unwind and enjoy themselves during the day at camp, so. I still like to say, and I talked to Jean about this, I know when we ran the camp, we did some Trenton Thunder games and we did Sesame Place and we did things like that. And I still think it gives a kid an opportunity that can't afford to go or doesn't have someone to take him to a Trenton Thunder game or a parent or grandparent that can't afford to take him to Sesame Place for the day. And we bought tickets at very reasonable rates, they gave us a discount. And we charged, the kids went free, but the parents, if they wanted to go, they was at a discount rate. And the school provided the buses and stuff like that. So if we could just add one wrinkle in next year, I mean, I think that just to give them something to do. Look, not every kid plays basketball, baseball, football. I mean, you know what I mean? There's kids that do a lot of other things. So they're not interested in sports. Not everybody is. So I mean, you know, we need to, when Cindy Wade ran this program and Betty's daughter, it was a huge success. It was the biggest day of the year that they went to Sesame Place or to the Trenton Thunder game. And then at the end of the year, they rented some water slides and they had the camp counselors there wetting the slides and the kids, they had a cookout down at the baseball fields. So we could just implement some of these little, look, if it's going to cost us a little bit more and we could figure a way to pay for it, we're all in. So we're into this program and I think we need to try to just keep building on it.
You'd be happy to do that. Latoya?
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
You guys want to meet over to winter and prepare for next year? We're always available.
Appreciate it, thank you. If I may, just in closing, speaking about next year, one of the things that we've done over the past couple of years has been very successful, raising funds for like the things you mentioned, Ralph, frankly, those extras. One of the things that grant funded programs such as 21st Century, things they don't provide is transportation for programs. So if you're talking about maybe sending kids to, you know, Trenton Thunder game, whatever, the AOC then would be the vehicle to pay for something like that. So we're holding our fifth annual Fall Classic in November this year, honoring Mr. Lou Pachochi. And it's themed Building a Better Bristol, November 21st. Two reasons why I think you should purchase a ticket, $50 will get you a chance to win $1,000, $1,000 raffle. Be music and dancing, excellent food and beverages, all to be held at the Bristol, the Burrows Public Works Building, which believe it or not, it's a phenomenal facility. And I appreciate the Burrows partnership in allowing us to use that facility for that evening. The second reason why I think you should attend is Lou and his family at CBM slash Bristol Fuel, they've been proud supporters of what we've done, proud supporters in helping to build Bristol Borough. So I think hopefully it'd be an opportunity to thank Mr. Pachochi and his family for what they've done for not only us at AOC, but also for Bristol, you know, community at large. So tickets will be on sale at Great Ideas by Ann and the Borough Tax Office. Again, they are $50. The night is November 21st, 7 to 9 o'clock. Any questions, any things we spoke about tonight programmatically or financially as far as our Fall Classic, fifth annual? It's hard to believe we've been doing it for five years already. One other thing, if I may, before I go, I'd like to thank two council for their support. We instituted a policy this year whereby we said parents had to attend an info meeting prior to the camp commencing. And we stuck by that policy. Some parents weren't real pleased at that. So I mentioned to Mr. Dylan if in fact it was okay to abide by that rule, he said absolutely. So we tried at this particular camp to get parents involved, these coming to a meeting. For what they were getting, it's the least they could do. And to have council support in that policy, we really, really appreciate that. So thank you for that.
I think that you realize that, you know, we support you financially, but I don't think anybody here ever told you how to run your program. We trust in you and Mary and now Latoya to, you know, do what's right. We're not going to micro match, it's like raising the bar. I mean, we helped get Bill Pez up and running and now it's probably one of the nicest things that came into town and the work that he's putting in it. But there's nobody sitting here that calls him every day and says you need, it's not the way things should run. And I think, you know, if we trust the people that are running something, then I think, you know, if we're giving you $20,000, we should trust that you're going to do the right thing.
But it's nice when that rubber meat, you know, hits the road.
Right.
That we have support council and that was, as I said, that was key, really, really important. So thank you for that in addition to your financial support.
And before you walk out, one other thing. If you're going to talk to Sesame Place or them, you got to go like early in the van, now to start negotiating your ticket price. Let's just say they come up with a $20 ticket. Well, maybe you could get people that, like, I would buy five or 10 tickets for the kids. So you can go to people that can't afford a lot of money, but might say, you know what, I'm going to buy two tickets, I'm going to buy five tickets, I'll buy whatever. And before you know it, you get enough people, you have, that will be paid for without even touching any other money. So if you could come up with a number and you put this flyer out and say, you know what, we want to take the kids to Sesame Place, it's going to cost $20 a ticket. Is anybody interested in purchasing X amount of tickets to send a child to Sesame Place for the day? So I mean, like I said, I'll start with 10 tickets, no matter what the price is.
As I said, in lieu of that too, I mean, supporting the Fall Classic, you know, money then generated by the AOC then would do something like that as well.
Some people may not want to, a lot of people don't like to go to events, but they're willing to contribute. So maybe, Mary, if you guys could come up over the next few months with a price. And maybe at that, or even sooner, when you get to Louis' thing, somebody might say, they could bring it up, we're sponsoring a trip to Sesame Place next year, we're sponsoring a trip there and it's going to, anybody want to buy X amount of tickets to send somebody? I think there's a lot of people in town that if you ask are willing to help.
I agree.
So.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jean. Thank you again for your time as well.
Thank you, guys.
Jean, I just wanted to thank you, you guys have shown yourself again this year and you can't imagine what you've got to do next year and in the future. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
This week, October 4th through the 10th is Fire Prevention Week. The theme this year is Hear the Beep Where You Sleep. And it's emphasized that every bedroom needs to have a working smoke alarm in it. We've managed to make arrangements to get an approximately one-minute public safety announcement on the Borough Channel relating to the need and this theme. We've also just ordered 700 smoke alarms through our federal grant, so we should be receiving those within the next 30 days and we'll be able to continue that program to install smoke alarms at no cost to the Borough residents. October 5th, 6th and 7th, we're at the fire departments, at the daycare centers and the elementary school classes up to 4th grade doing our fire prevention program. That's an annual thing that we do. On Wednesday night, we'll be attending the Family Association Night at the Grundy Arena. Recently, we conducted a class for the staff at Snyder Girardi and Bristol High School on, it's called an evac track chair. It's a special chair that's used to move handicapped students to evacuate them in case of an emergency. That training went over very well. On October the 11th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Walmart, we'll be having our annual Bristol Borough Fire Prevention Day. And I would encourage everyone in the community to come out and see that.
Any questions for the fire chief?
Are you going to be going to Racks Learning Center?
Yes.
Okay, good. And I know someone there that is interested in leading firearms, so good, very good.
Anyone else have anything for Herbie? Thank you, sir. Nobody's here for the feral cats, right? Or they are? No, because they want to make a presentation tonight. And just for the record, Councilwoman Rodriguez was here from 5:30 until 10 after 7 in executive session with us, but she had a family emergency that she had to leave for. And before we get into council and the public, I want everybody to remember, save the date for the 39th Annual Historic Bristol Day on Saturday, October 17th. I don't see a ring date on here, so hopefully.
It's the next day.
It is the next day? So it's a great day to support, it's the last event in Bristol.
Wait a minute, it says rain or shine. Sorry.
Rain or shine, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. So October 17th is Historic Bristol Day and hopefully everybody could come out and walk our town.
Yeah, it says rain or shine.
Okay, I'm going to go to public participation. So anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything, go to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jacqueline Marish. I live in Grundy Tower, right across the street at 205 Pond. I'm here to speak briefly about the difference that four minutes can make. On September 3rd, on or about midnight shortly thereafter, three Grundy residents were sitting outside of our building and witnessed a car slowly driving through the parking lot but not stopping. Shortly thereafter, two males on bicycles came into the parking lot, approached my car and were lingering around my car. Two of these three witnesses went up to my car and confronted these males. The males were hostile and threatened assault, so the two witnesses backed off. A third witness called the police. So a Borough Police Officer did come over to Grundy Tower Parking Lot and met with the witnesses and looked at my car, et cetera, et cetera, saw that it had been rifled through. There were handprints on the outside of the windows where it looked like they were trying to push it down even more, because I always keep my windows up and my door's locked. I'm 70 years old, I know these common sense things. So, here's where the four minutes come in. It would have taken, at the most, four minutes for that police officer to walk into Grundy Tower, ride the elevator and come to my apartment and say, hey lady, it looks like your car was allegedly broken into, because I'm sure that's what he would have said, and allegedly rifled through. Your car is now unlocked, windows are down, and there's a great chance for further criminal activity. Here's what didn't happen. I was not notified. Although, the report by the police officer, which took 25 days for me to get, has this statement in it, and I quote, "Responding officer attempted to contact owner with negative results," close quotes. This is a lie. The next statement on the report says that one of the witnesses said they would notify the owner. That's also not the way it happened. If Paul Harvey were here, he would have said, here's the rest of the story. The police officer actually said to the three witnesses, and he knew my first name because papers were in the car, I have roadside assistance, I have receipts from work I had done on my car. So he says to the witnesses, well, it's not like Jacqueline had thousands of dollars in the glove box. You can tell her in the morning. Before 8 o'clock the next morning, my car was stolen from the Grundy Tower Parking Lot. So four minutes means a lot. I could have been notified. Five days later, my car was recovered by the township police. It was trashed. I had to pay $460 to get it out of the impound lot if I got it out within 24 hours. Let me tell you, I got it out within 24 hours. I have spent close to $900 dealing with the consequences of a stolen car, which I can no longer park in Grundy Parking Lot because I don't feel it's safe there. I now know what it means to have something trashed. My car was filthy inside and out, including the trunk. Chocolate was melted in the ashtray, chewed tobacco was spit into the cup holder, papers, clothing, lipstick, soda bottles, food wrappers, papers thrown everywhere, including in the trunk. They must have driven through a cornfield because the car was just littered with not just dust, but stuff that you would find in a corn and wheat field. The side of the car, from the front to the back, on the passenger side, the paint was all messed up. Tires had obviously hit against curbs. So, I've spent several days and weeks of mental distress rearranging daily activities, figuring out where I'm going to keep this car so it's now not in the Grundy Parking Lot, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the difference four minutes can make. And I'm now going to take less than four minutes to leave this building, walk across the street, go into the Grundy Tower Building and enter my apartment.
I'm not even going to comment on that as bad as I feel right now for that lady. Side of the room want to speak on anything? Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything, go to the podium, state your name and address?
Gary Paul, 800 Bristol Pike. Well, the thing that motivated me to be here this evening is Lorraine Cullen. Because Lorraine stated on August 3rd, 2015, to the solicitor, when you guys were talking about who was responsible for maintaining the center median, Lorraine said, I quote, "Are we responsible for that?" And Mr. Di Giuseppe, you said right away, Di Giuseppe, I beg your pardon, yes. And then Lorraine said, "That's terrible." So I know based on her statement, that this council was never informed, like Bristol Township was, on three different occasions and recommended by their solicitor and the township planning engineer not to get involved in the median whatsoever because of liability to their So I went to the Borough meetings and I found that on April 2nd, 2012, Mr. Dylan brought up the resolution to be voted on and he did not explain, like Bristol Township was explained to, that if you elect to let Penn Dot cut the grass, it's on them 100%. But if you guys elect to go with the flowers, it's on you. It's on the township, it's on the Borough, it's on any town that elects to do the flowers. But once again, I want to reiterate, Mr. Dylan, at that particular meeting, did not explain the resolution, did not give the council the chance to know that they had an option. So I just recently heard on your, it was So, I just recently heard on your, it was either the last meeting or the meeting before, that you, Mr. President, said that you don't want your guys to go out there either, because of the liability, and that you're probably going to have to hire it out, and spend some of the borough's money to maintain the flowers, when you guys had, well, they didn't know they had an opportunity to vote against it. So, the next meeting was April the 11th, 2012, and once again, Mr. Dillon brought it up, and did not explain, or give the council, the knowledge that they had an opportunity to get out from underneath that grass median, or the flowers. So, before you guys go out and hire anybody, or point it off on Bristol Township and have to reimburse them, I recommend you read that resolution carefully, and let the council revote on it, because I'm sure, including Lorraine, that she would have voted no to the flowers, and yes to the grass, exactly like Bristol Township did, on three consecutive meetings. But, believe it or not, Bristol Township, the whole council, Bristol Township, developed amnesia on May the 17th, 2015, and they elected to go with the flowers after their solicitor and the township engineer recommended against it. So, the reason they voted to go with the flowers at that particular meeting was because one of the council members asked the council president, "What did Bristol Borough opt to do?" And the president, who's now deceased, said, "Oh, that's easy. They opted to go with the flowers." So, he says, "I think we should go with the flowers too." After three previous meetings-
So, we're trendsetters.
It's our fault.
So, I say, you still have a chance, if you want to save some money, and get out from underneath this, talking about who's going to hire who, and how much are we going to spend, why don't you just tell PennDOT, because Mike Holliver said at one of the meetings that the flowers were no big deal. I quote, that's what he said, "They could be taken out at any time. The only flowers you're going to have to maintain anyway, if you still go through with it, is only 100 feet on each side of the light pole." So, you're talking about 200 feet at Bath, 200 feet at Beaver, and I think there's one more light, what, near Commerce? So, it's not that much. And, once again, Mike Holliver reiterated to them before they took that final vote, he said, "Look, I just want yous to know, if you go with the flowers, it's on you. If you go with the grass, it's on PennDOT, no chargebacks." So, I was wondering, does that help you out any?
No, let me just explain to you my opinion on this. I think PennDOT gave everybody two or three options to choose from. I don't think it was ever the fact that they were going to cut the grass for the borough.
Mike Holliver stated it, I'll give you the minutes, the minutes of the meeting.
Well, I don't know when he stated it, but we'll get something from PennDOT to clarify this, but I think PennDOT at no time was ever going to cut the grass or maintain anything. You had an option, just like Tully Town was holding up the project, because they didn't want the medium at all. They wanted cement all the way down, as you preferred, that you wanted for 13 to get rid of the medium strip down the center. I don't think we had the option, grass, flowers. We may have had that option, but I think at all meetings, it was that we were going to maintain the islands. Now, I could be wrong. I'll clarify that through PennDOT by next week's meeting.
Well, I asked two of the representatives, a PennDOT representative and a TMA representative, I got their names here.
Okay, well, who are they?
I asked them, I said, "Who are they?"
Mike, you're saying?
It was, I'll give it to you right here, let's see. Rich Brahler was at a meeting.
Rich who?
Brahler, B-R-A-H-L-E-R. He's a senior planner for the commission.
Okay.
And he said, "Grass is on PennDOT, flowers are on you." At nine minutes into the meeting, till 28 minutes and 45 seconds, he spoke, and that's when he said. Now, I called Mr. Brahler, and I asked him, I said, "Did you give Bristol Borough the same option that you gave the township?" And he said, "No, I didn't." I said, "Well, how can I find out who approached the borough, and who was it that you should have given the same options to?" And he says, "I think it was Mike Holliver." Now, Mike Holliver is quoted in my notes at these meetings, and he informed the township, he said, "I want to reiterate one more time before you guys vote, remember this. Grass is on PennDOT, flowers are on you. And, we only put the flowers in there, because the redevelopment authority was putting all kinds of stuff in, and we carried it on, but we left it up to the towns." And I'll quote him, he said, "The grass is no big deal," I beg your pardon, "the flowers are no big deal, we could take them out at any time." So, I think if you guys revote, and say, "Look, we had no idea we had an option," because evidently, it wasn't passed on to the council members, tell them that you changed your mind, and now you don't have to hire anybody or spend any money for the borough.
Let me hear what Mr. Dillon has to say.
The first thing is, I remember, I remember this coming up, and we talked about it, and I remember asking specifically, I remember asking Mr. Dillon, "What is the easiest," that's what he told us, basically, we didn't have an option. I remember that. It wasn't an option, and we basically came to the conclusion, whatever's going to be the cheapest for the borough resident, and the easiest, that's what we voted on. And I don't know, Mr. Dillon, if, did we ever get an option like this, or this is something that you're going to find out with Ralph? Is this what you're going to ask PennDOT?
I'd like to.
Because I don't remember that being an option, as saying that PennDOT was going to pay for the, because I know for a fact, I would have voted that way.
Sure. Can I ask a question? Just postdominally, would you be able to take a vote right now? Would anybody vote for flowers today, knowing that they could have voted for grass only, and it wouldn't be a burden on the borough?
If they were going to cut the grass and no cost us, I would vote tonight.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And I would just like to say, if what you're saying is true, I'm sure Mr. Dillon, I know, having worked with Mr. Dillon for the last four years, that he would absolutely pass that information on, if it's accurate, and if he had it.
Absolutely.
So, I'm sure at this point, it's either one of two things. He either wasn't given the information himself, or there's maybe something we're missing.
Well, that's beautiful, because if he wasn't given the information, then that's your way back to PennDOT and saying, "Listen, we're billing for, and we don't have the money anyway. We're trying to give it to our kids, so we can send them to Sesame Place. The last thing the borough needs is to be hiring an outside firm, spending our tax-
I think that you had made a statement that the reason I wanted the medium and the grass, so my son-in-law would have a job, if I'm correct on that.
No, we'll keep the maintenance employees.
Perfect.
That's correct.
Now, how stupid of a statement is that?
Well, it just, you know, how about, why didn't we go with the turning lane?
Because you want, look, this whole thing was about your ice cream stand.
That was your decision.
Not about safety, not about anything else, providing a turn into your ice cream stand. We, this council decided to make sure, we were trying to make that road as safe as possible for pedestrians, and slow down the traffic. That's why there were millions and millions of dollars spent on Route 13, not to worry about one person.
But, Mr. President, are you aware-
But, to make a statement that this, "I voted, so my son-in-law will have a job to cut grass," is basically, you don't even want to know what I want to say, but I'll publicly tell you.
And I don't really care, but let me tell you something, Mr. President, you have no idea that since they completed 413 in '07, there hasn't been one automobile fatality. Now, the same amount of years, eight years, from 2012 to 2000, I beg your pardon, 2005 to 2012, there were 13 total fatalities on Route 13 from 413 to Levittown. Eight of them were pedestrians, only six, same amount of years, were vehicles. And those six vehicles, I think there was somebody from Bristol, his son got killed racing a Mustang or something, you know, only six people in eight years, and they were all criminals, or they were all committing, they weren't abiding by the law, and now you're going to punish all the businessmen on Route 13?
I'm not punishing anybody, I didn't, not you in particular.
Not you in particular.
Are you saying, PennDOT comes in, they want to spend $40 million to beautify Route 13?
Yeah.
They presented a plan to this council. People went to public hearings, all the businesses, everybody had an opportunity to do what they wanted to do. I didn't hear from anybody on Route 13, except you. You were the only person that came here and voiced your opinion against the project.
Well, you know, we didn't know about it. You know, PennDOT, and I don't know what you guys do, you never had PennDOT here, that I'm aware of.
We had PennDOT here. Yes, we did. They were here and they explained the project to us.
Well, they might have explained it, but you didn't ask enough questions, because-
Well, we didn't ask the questions that you wanted us to.
Well, it was simple, it was in-your-face, turning lane, that was the most practical thing for this economy.
Their theory was, they wanted a safe spot for somebody that was crossing, if a car was coming, they could have stood in the island. I still don't think it's safe to cross Route 13.
Absolutely.
But, I'm not crossing it, but the theory behind PennDOT, and this is only, don't quote me on this, their theory was, if somebody's crossing, and they can't make it across, they could stop in the grass area for safety until the cars pass. If I was doing it, it would have been lit up all the way down Route 13, because I think it's too dark, no matter what you do there.
It is, by the way, it's very dark.
You can't see anybody. There was a guy on a bike the other night, I didn't see, so.
No, I'm just giving, I'm here to give you an opportunity.
I guess, I guess, before the, before the purpose of, you know, what you're talking about as well, I'm glad that you came up and brought that to our attention, the idea of it, if it's something that we have a choice to make, I think that the majority of council would feel the same way. If we have the choice between flowers and cost us money, and grass, and not costing us anything, I think that's, we're-
I mean, I don't think anybody sitting here would say, "We want to spend money." And the reason I said we didn't want to work for Bristol Township, because when Mr. Girard brought it up, he was concerned about how bad it looked, and our theory was, we don't want to put our guy's safety on the line, to stand there with a push mower, or a drive-behind mower in that medium strip, and God forbid, get killed. That was my suggestion, to sub it out, not to protect my son-in-law's job.
Well, then, you never knew about the option, Mr. President, you were never given the opportunity.
No, I thought we had a choice to make, and basically, this council voted on, oh, it's beautification before anything. So, nobody ever presented to us, I mean, look, we don't read every spec that comes out from PennDOT, and sit here and look at everything that's in there, we're, you know.
Well, I think if it's going to cost the borough money every year to maintain that for life, you should have been on top of that one, personally. So, now you have an opportunity to go back to PennDOT and tell them you're not interested.
Okay. Why didn't Mr. Holliver say this to you, that-
What do you want to know? Mr. Who?
Holliver, you used the name Holliver, H-O-L-V-E.
Oh, Mike Holliver, he was at a meeting on 4/1912, Bristol Township, it was their second meeting, and it started at 21 minutes, 30 seconds into the meeting, and it ran for to the 28th minute, 20 minutes, seconds.
And the grass will be cut by PennDOT, the borough wants, but no flowers.
He said, and you can prove it, he said, "No big deal."
He's a PennDOT employee?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
He said, "No big deal, it can be taken out, and I would recommend that they do that for you people."
Anybody else on this side of the room want to speak on anything? We've only been here since 5:30, so it's-
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Harry Crowe, 200 block of Chacter Street. I have a couple of things, I'll start off with some easy things. About four or five months ago, my neighbors came across here and asked, "Could I help?" There was a utility pole across the street from me, Catty Corner. It was in very deplorable condition. It was rotted at the bottom, and was potentially ready to fall at any time, and the neighbors kept calling Verizon and Comcast, and they really couldn't get an answer of who was responsible, so it went on for well over six months. So, they asked me, "Do I have any influence?" I said, "I think I know a few people with the borough." Like, long story short, I contacted Mr. Dillon, and within 10 days, he tracked it down and had Verizon come and replace that pole. So, I want to say to the residents, you know, "If you have a problem, don't come to Harry Crowe, come to Mr. Dillon, that, you know, he'll be glad to help the residents, you know, when you contact the right people."
Trying to get people off your back, aren't you?
So, I'd just like to say, you know, thank you.
Don't want any flowers planted there, right? I don't want any.
And I like to say, I always like to say nice things, I was tickled to death about the program they talked about with that summer program, and things like that make me realize why I love this town.
That's right.
Now, I'll get into the real reason why I'm here. First of all, I would like to thank the council for voting, to put the referendum on the ballot, to leave it up to the people. What's more important in our community than ambulance service? And we're going to let the residents of the town determine how important it is for them to have our ambulance service to stay into existence. I would like to really say thank you to a couple of people that I have been driving them nuts, Mr. Salerno, Mr. Dillon, and Ralph. Ralph, you've been very patient with me, I'm very-
You're wearing out, Harry.
Honestly, I have tracked Ralph down for a few months, and he has been very cordial with me being persistent to getting this on the ballot. It's not, I'm not here about myself, but I'd just like to say, I have 52 years in the ambulance service, and I'm very passionate about continuing this ambulance service, long as I'm going. I hope I live another 20 years, but one of the things that I'm here tonight to talk about was the, there was a short article, and I know you're not responsible for the articles, Jim McGinnis from The Carrier put a little article in, and maybe a lot of people don't read it, but I just want to clarify it for the people at home. Says, "The voters in Bristol must decide whether to raise local real estate taxes by two mils." That's not really true. We're asking to increase our allocation to two mils. I know you're aware that the borough code says that you can't give more than two mils, even if you wanted to. So, I'm here to tell the people at home today, listening and anybody here, that we're at, the Bucks Canyon Rescue Squad is asking the residents to vote yes on election day, to increase our mileage to two mils.
What it is, it's a $90,000 increase to what you're already getting.
Yes.
That's what it is.
And when I'm here, I like to do equations, and what this equals to at home, people, is the half the cost of a 20-ounce coffee at Wawa, or if you're a smoker, it's the cost of two cigarettes-
Per week.
-per week. So, it's not really a lot of money. I know people in a fixed income, and I'm that way now, you ever thought I'd get this old, but, you know, I'm with a fixed income, but I'm more than willing to pay my share to keep the Bucks Canyon Rescue Squad in service. Once again, I'd just like to say thank you very much for all the things that you guys do, and taking some of the stuff you do. I sat in the seat up here for four years, and I-
I just want to tell you one thing, Wawa's giving free coffee away, so don't use that as an example.
No, no, I paid a dollar or six today, but-
Thanks for the words.
I just think that it's, fire, rescue, and police are the three most important things in any town, and I think that we have supported all three to the maximum we could support you guys. So, if the voters, and I tell you, I'm 100% behind this, if the voters vote no on election day, not to give you this increase, and God forbid, they need an ambulance and doesn't, they got to wait for Ben Salem or Newtown to come into town, and that could happen anyway, but we're, 80% of the time, we have our own. So, it's a sad day.
I think that the residents of our community are smart enough, you know, to vote yes on this, to continue with our ambulance service. I think that we have second to none ALS ambulance service in the county. I think that we provide the very best that money could buy- I think that we had, we provide the very best that money could buy, you know, just like to, again, say thank you and thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Anybody else on?
Address. What's that?
We have you on file.
I was going to say, did you miss me?
Yeah.
Right, okay. It's been a while. Penn Brook Street, 300 Block of Cleveland Street. I, I want to reiterate a little bit what Harry said, but, and emphasize the importance of this issue. I've been talking to people throughout town, some on Facebook, uh, about it. There's, it seems like more people are in favor of it than against it, but some people still have to be convinced. Uh, I'd just say that borough residents, you have a say in whether our rescue squad stays open. And to vote yes on this referendum, um, the average homeowner in Bristol, uh, is, their house is assessed at, uh, sixteen thousand, four hundred dollars. So that's, so one mil equates, if Mr. Dillon can correct me, to sixteen dollars and forty cents, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So two mils is thirty-two dollars and eighty cents a year, gonna go, is what the squad is requesting. That equates to, uh, about sixty-three cents a week. You know, how, that's a no-brainer to me. Um, and of course, nobody wants their taxes to go up, but, you know, where's the priorities here? I guess the main thing, uh, people have to ask themselves is, "How much longer will it take for Ben Salem, uh, Fairless Hills or Marsville Rescue Squads to get to my home in the borough? My wife or my child or grandchild, anything? You know, your, your wife or husband's having a stroke or a heart attack or your child stops breathing when every minute, every second counts? Um, is it worth, you know, worth it to, to have to wait an extra twenty or thirty minutes? Um, you know, yeah, um, you could say we have the Firehouse Emergency Service, which is great, we're very fortunate to have that. Uh, but from what I understand, uh, it, it's a great service, but it's still limited what services they have as comparison to the, to the rescue squad. Um, because that's some of the talk that's going around. We have the, the firehouses to, you know, to, to take care of the people until the squad from Ben Salem or whatever gets here. But from what I understand is, um, the firehouses, they're, you know, they can come, they, they're volunteer. They're all volunteer. Whereas, so nobody's twenty-four seven at, at the firehouse. Uh, they have to, if they, when they get the call, they have to come from their home or wherever they are, store, come to the firehouse, get the truck, then go to the, the scene wherever the emergency is. Whereas the rescue squad has two people on, on there, on premises twenty-four seven. Uh, plus they have volunteers also. So they have two paid people there twenty-four seven whenever, you know, like I said, um, I remember years ago at my brother's wedding, we were at the Sons of Italy at his reception. My grandfather had a heart attack. And I remember calling, back then we didn't have cell phones and all, but I remember calling the, the rescue squad and, um, and everybody's like, "Where are they? Where are they?" And, uh, you know, it's a time when, you know, he's on the floor and there, there were two nurses there doing CPR on him, thank God. But I remember people saying from out of town, "Oh, it takes two minutes in my town for, uh, uh, an ambulance to get there." Of course, they're, you know, they're all hyper and excited and worried. And I remember they came and, and did their work, their services and all. And I remember asking my date at the time after this all happened, I said, "Did it seem like it took long for the squad to get there?" And she said it was about average, about five, six minutes, I think it took. But when every second and every minute counts, especially if you have a loved one, there's a difference. But getting back to the firehouses, like I, um, they, like Herb, you can correct me, they could do your pulse, your blood pressure, CPR, they could shock your heart, give you oxygen, which are all great. Did I miss some things, Herb?
No, that's, they're TNT skills.
Right, right. So the rescue squad does all those, plus, um, they have advanced life support. They can intubate someone, stick a tube down their throat. Um, they can start an IV, they can administer medications, they transport them directly to the hospital. These, you know, these are services that when a stroke, you know, really persons, or even younger persons having a stroke, that's when they say, "You don't get that, that help right away, you're, you know, you're, you're in trouble." So, I mean, that's pretty much what, and one other thing I wanted to emphasize if I can, maybe with your permission, if Mr. Dillon, since he's the manager, can, um, highlight this. What does the budget, what, what is the borough budget a year for the, um, rescue squad right now?
Point seven-five mils. Point seven-five mils, which is about sixty thousand off the top of my head.
About sixty thousand?
And they're requesting to go to two mils.
Correct, correct. But I'm just saying, right now, roughly sixty thousand. Okay. All right. And the firehouses, what do we budget for the firehouses?
A firehouse gets thirty-two-five.
Well, I'm saying the whole, what, what we, the borough pays, they're taxpayers, one-hundred-and-sixty-four or something like that, is that right?
One-sixty-two.
One-sixty-two.
And that only went up last year, correct?
Yeah.
Something like that? All right, so one-hundred, so roughly sixty thousand, one-hundred and, one-hundred-and-sixty-two for the fires. And what about the police department? What do we budget for the police department?
Point seven million.
Two point seven million. Okay. Now you can say to some people, one service is more important than the other. In my opinion, if somebody's having a heart attack, the rescue squad's the most, you know, at that moment, it's the most important service. If somebody's house is burning down, the firehouse is the most important. Somebody's being robbed and the police, to, to weigh, if one service is more important than the other, you know, it depends on your circumstances, you know? But for, to break it down for sixty-three cents per week, not much more than the fuss of a postage stamp, to, to keep the, the rescue squad in our backyard is a no-brainer to me. And one last thing, um, if I'm not mistaken, uh, and I remember this, I, I remember talking to Harry and, and his wife Kathy at the time, when they were, um, petitioning for the borough back in nineteen ninety-one. So it's been twenty, it'll be twenty-five years since the borough gave any money, any ex, you know, increase to the rescue squad. That's a long time. So I just, you know, just hope that people are very aware of what they might, um, let go of if they don't vote yes on this referendum on November third. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
You're the last one. Anything? That ends poll participation. Okay, Lorraine.
Um, I just wanted to tell people that we are going to bring in the Little League, the sixteen U team to congratulate them on, uh, their achievements next Monday. Um, I, I believe that Betty got ahold of Buster and all the kids, so, uh, we'll see them next week. Also, I just wanted to talk about Route, the Route 13 project. They also did a drain replacement that was very important to our town as well. That was, you know, something that happened that we didn't discuss. But anyway, um, this week I had the pleasure of going to the settlement of the formerly known building of Mill Run. And, um, it's called, the people that bought it are the 1201 Wilson Acquisition LLC. And they are very excited about fixing the place up and, and, uh, it was just a wonderful day and it's a great thing for our town. And Greg and I are beyond thrilled that, uh, this is going to happen. So just wanted to let you know and let all the naysayers know that it is done. So, thank you.
All right. Um, I would like to just reiterate, you know, a lot of what Lorraine said. Unfortunately, I could not be at settlement, but, um, I was ecstatic to hear that, that Mill Run actually went to settlement. I want to congratulate every member of council, you know, I know we had some heated debates over it, um, but, you know, we hung in there and, uh, you know, in the face of some skepticism, I guess I could, I should say, um, we were plugging away all the way and, uh, really, really happy to see that that's gone to settlement. I think there are some, some grand bets that were laid out there on Facebook that people might need to take them up on, right? Like people are saying, "I'll eat my foot before that actually happens."
Yeah, let's, let's see all that. Let's see all that stuff.
I'm just teasing, it's, you know, it's, but, uh...
We're liars, you know, whatever.
We're, we're happy to see it moving forward, so. Um, also, I want to, of course, as always, um, thank Mr. Dillon and, um, the borough crew. It's just how responsive they really are. There is a, uh, there was a light that was out on the corner of Coolidge Place, what I think everyone thought would be a routine fix, ended up being a big deal where they had to dig up the light because there was some, anyway, it was just one of those examples of you ask for a small thing, it turns into a big thing, but those guys were out there, um, you know, right away fixing the, and doing all the work that they needed to do. And I just wanted to, you know, reiterate that we're excited about some things that are happening in town. I mean, we've got Mill Run, of course, we've got Riverfront North with the development there. I know a lot of people were also wondering if that was actually going to take off. And now we see that, you know, there are actual structures that are being built there. Um, you go down to where the old stocks, um, was and you see the, you know, the pylons being driven there and really looks like that's moving forward. You look at, um, the Mill Street Cantina, which if you're not familiar with that, it's, uh, where the old Kelch House was, is going to be a Mexican restaurant, uh, starting on, um, uh, roughly sometime in November, I think he said. But, uh, really cool, like, you know, tequila bar type of place, neat, neat things going on. So just excited about a lot of things going on and, uh, that's all I have. Thanks.
Yeah. Um, it sounds like there's going to be a lot of people in Bristol without feet.
That's true. You might be the first one.
But, I mean, just to add to, I, I mean, I, I know Lorraine wants to, to claim me as one of the naysayers, but to me, it's still, this is just the beginning stage. It, it went through and it's, it's exciting and everybody wants what they talked about to happen. There's, there's no denying that, myself included. All I'm saying is, I just don't like to give false hope that something, we're still a long ways away for it becoming what we saw on paper. That's all I'm saying. And I want people to understand that, do you agree that it's still a long way?
I just wish you were, I just wish you were there that day to speak to these people and the, the things that were, I was told about how much they wanted this to be done and how, with the money they have. They, they, they were ready, they already went in there, started knocking things down. I mean, I, I don't know, you want to be a naysayer, you can go ahead and be a naysayer. I know they're going to do a good job here. I know it. I know it.
Well, maybe, Lorraine, maybe you didn't hear what I said, is that...
No, I did hear what you said.
No, no, maybe you didn't, because what I said was, myself and everybody else...
I don't believe it.
All right. You don't have to, maybe you're a naysayer.
I am a naysayer.
All right.
With you.
Well, anyway, Lorraine, I wish that the Mill Run project goes smoothly. I hope it, it turns out to be what we all hope it is going to be for the borough and, you know, the taxpayers. So we'll leave it at that and, and we'll see how it goes. Anything I could do to, to help it go smoothly, I'll bend over backwards to do it. Uh, North Ford Concerns, the first thing I have, and, and these are things, Mr. Dillon, that I'll, I'll, I'll give to you in the email also. There's yellow lines on Fourth Avenue that, that, that people think that the yellow line comes out too far, so it's kind of like killing one of their parking spots. I, I have a picture of it, I'll send it to you and then you can give me an idea of what, what we could do about it. Um, the other thing also with the Route 13 project, not everything is, is going so great for the people that are living in the community, because I had some residents that I had to go out and see and what's happened is the workers on Route 13 is, what they're doing is they're eating their lunch, they're drinking sodas, Gatorade, and they're just littering the properties on 13. I don't know if anybody else has been able to see it, but I, I think that's something, I don't know who we talked to, Pendott or Morrissey, whoever's running the job, that at least we could talk to the workers and let them know that, you know, when you're done drinking your Gatorade, just throw it in the trash. Um, the playground at the fields, uh, at the baseball fields, I still see, you know, there's grass growing, it's, uh, it's all kicked up underneath where you have the underlayment coming up. It, it's definitely a, it is definitely a tripping hazard, some, something needs to be done over there.
Can I just speak on that, Tony?
Yeah.
I spoke to George about it, because I asked him why it wasn't done yet.
Uh-huh.
And he said they're waiting for the weather to get cold when the kids aren't using it, then they're going to kill the weeds and then they're going to freshen everything up.
Okay.
That's what he, I was told.
Okay.
When I went by, he said, "George, how come this playground's not done yet?"
Well, I appreciate it. And then the last thing again, there's a light at the end of Third Avenue that it reaches out onto 13 that's going off. I think it's, it's going on during the day and it shuts off at night. I have the, uh, number on that, I'll, I'll send that over to you, uh, in an email also. But that's all I have.
Dave.
Yes, thanks, Ralph. Uh, yeah, I'm happy to report to the Pine Street people, Corson Street, Spring Street, that we, uh, we received a bid from E and K Company for eight forty-seven. They're going to be starting their work within seven to ten business days and they should be done before the end of the month. So Spring Street will finally be open and that building finally will be secured and safe. And also, um, the water fountain that keeps the water fresh over at the, uh, at the lagoon, uh, Mr. Dillon has been on for a while, is, is, I guess you guys are aware of that, right? So, that's all I got.
Robbie?
Thank you.
Do you have anything? Jim?
Yeah. Come here, my paper. Here it is. Uh, in terms of the, uh, work agenda that's in front of you, uh, proposed advertisements of the intent to implement the local service tax for two thousand and sixteen, as well as the earned income tax will be on the agenda. Uh, in front of you, uh, tonight were two proposed resolutions, uh, for grants to address flooding, uh, issues, uh, so that they will be on the agenda, uh, Monday evening also. Uh, as a point of information, uh, we did settle on, uh, 1029 Elm Street this afternoon, though there's only two remaining, uh, properties, uh, left on Elm Street. And that's it.
Dave?
Yes, Mr. Dillon, on, on the, uh, earned income tax, um, do you have a breakdown of, uh, how many people in Bristol Borough work and how many people are now paying that tax to other township?
Yes, we have it. Uh, I'll, I'll try to have it ready. You know, again, this is just, uh, the process, it's an advertisement, doesn't say you're going to pass it, but it gives you that option to pass it.
I think that, if I get everybody's attention, before Monday night, this is the agenda, and I think Mr. Gerard made a good point, is that if you have any questions on this, now's the time to discuss it. It's, what's being advertised is only, it's not that we're voting to implement it, we need by law to pass it Monday night and then make a decision during our budget if we need this or we do not need it.
You're talking about the earned income tax.
Right, Jim?
Both.
I pretty much understand the, uh, local service tax, um, just, uh...
But I'm saying, that's all the stuff we could discuss during the budget and...
Yes.
But if anybody has any questions on what this is about, I'd rather discuss it now than...
Well, I mean, I, I guess what it came down to last year, right, when we were discussing it, is that we just felt ill-equipped with the numbers at that point, right? As far as, so that would be, that would be what I would be most interested in, is what this means to, you know, the numbers, you know?
And we were able to balance the budget last year without using it, but I don't know where we're going to be this year until we, you know, we'll know more after this week.
Right. And I'm, I'm always very interested in, and I think one of the big misconceptions about it last year was, for some people, it will absolutely be a new tax and, and that's a reality. But for, I think what was a misconception last year is that for a lot of people, they're already paying it elsewhere, right? And that we would just be actually collecting it as a, from, you know, like I teach in Huntington Valley, I pay it there. Instead of paying it there, I'd be paying it here. So, I mean, for some people, the reality is it would be new. But I'd be really interested to know, if we can get those numbers, how many of us are already paying it elsewhere? Just a thought.
So we all understand what's going on?